Good evening and welcome to the October 21st, 2020 Board of Education meeting. Before we begin our meeting, I'd like to ask everyone to please turn off your wireless communication devices to avoid interfering with the Board of Education's meeting. I would ask Board members to please mute your microphones to avoid the background noise. The Board of Education's meeting is being livestreamed and is available to the public on our webpage. At this point, I'd like to ask the Board member, Mr. Joshua Thomas, to please lead us in the Board's prayer and pledge allegiance.
Sorry, just a moment. Let's pray. Oh, so I thought I was muted. Let's pray. "O God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Be ever mindful of your guidance. Steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen." "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Ms. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board members and administration. Board members, please unmute your mics for the roll call. Mrs. Emmett?
Here.
Ms. Boozer-Strather?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray? Ms. Queen?
Present.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Swan?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
I'm present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
And Dr. Thornton?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley and Ms. Queen, Ms. King and Ms. Berkeley. Thank you all for the work that you've done in organizing and staffing this meeting with the Board of Education. Colleagues, would you please turn your attention to the adoption of the agenda for our meeting? And I'll receive a motion and a second for discussion. Ms. Queen?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the topic that was brought up in executive session that needs to come out to the Board concerning money being donated.
I'd like to-
Is there a second? Ms. Queen is making a motion to, as an emergency, to modify the agenda to add an emergency item involving a board contribution to a scholarship fund. As an emergency item to adjust the agenda for that purpose, we'll need nine votes of the Board to do so.
Did you hear the question, sir?
Yes, Mr. Burrows.
This is Mr. Valentine. Is there a discussion on the item or no discussion on emergency item?
No, I'm gonna call. I'm gonna call for the discussion. Just setting it up. So that motion is on the floor. It's been made by Ms. Queen and seconded by Mr. Burrows. It is to add an item 8.0. If the Board approves it, that's where it will be added, is 8.0. It will be an emergency item which requires nine votes of the Board. Discussion, Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, and I appreciate the sentiment of the Board member who brought up this item in executive session. My concern is that the potential item is conditional on advisement from the legal counsel, which we have not received yet. And so my vote is against because I don't feel comfortable taking a vote on an item without having legal counsel, which is what we brought up in the meeting as something conditional on this particular item. And so that is why I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Any other? Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Burrows, could I make a friendly amendment that might have Mr. Valentine's support? That contingent upon counsel's review of this matter, if he deems it to be within our scope and fair ground, that we move forward. But if he were to deem it inappropriate, that we can hold back on moving forward this. Would you accept that amendment?
Just a moment, Mr. Thomas, before you do that. Colleagues, what we're voting on now is adding the item to the agenda. So we're really not, we're not debating, we're just deciding whether even to talk about it. That's all we do.
I apologize. You're so right. I forgot that part. For the sake of discussion, Mr. Valentine, if I may just offer that if we do put this on the agenda, that I would, you know, request the Board member to modify his amendment so that it does incorporate legal counsel's feedback. So for the sake of discussion, for this being an agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And if it does get to that point and we start debating the substance of it, then Mr. Valentine will be informed of that. Colleagues, the vote is on whether the item will be added as an emergency item or so that we can debate it during this meeting?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
I recognize you, Mr. Burrows. Please proceed.
Colleagues, you know, I want to urge you to support this. I will absolutely support Mr. Thomas's, Joshua Thomas's friendly amendment to say that we would only do this if it is legally appropriate. As we know, our foundation does great work.
Mr. Burrows, you're going beyond, you're going beyond what is appropriate. Please don't do that.
Mr. Chair, I'm not going beyond what's appropriate.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Burrows. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, because I'm, you know, you know, our foundation gave out over $150,000 in scholarship money to our young people. Our foundation was essential in distributing meals during the pandemic through their meal challenge. And they raised over $125,000 for meals.
Mr. Burrows, may I interrupt you and please ask you to not debate the substance until we decide to add it as an agenda item? Will you please respect that?
Right, but I need to, if it fails, I won't have the opportunity to speak to why I want it as an emergency.
Because that would be the Board's pleasure, and it's not ready to talk about it. If the Board wants to talk about it, then it'll talk about it. So please-
Mr. Chair, I'm describing the emergency, so if I can finish. I'm an elected member speaking, so I'm trying to finish.
I'm gonna do this, Mr. Burrows, in the interest of collegiality, but I'm saying to you, you're being disrespectful to the Board, but please proceed. Recognize that you're doing that. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. And so I want to make sure that we do everything that we can to support our young people in the school district with meals and scholarships. The gala is before our next board meeting. We know that this pandemic has had a adverse impact on local businesses that would traditionally support the gala, and so I'm just asking that we vote this up.
Okay, Mr. Burrows, and thank you, and I hope you will appreciate that the Board that we did allow you to speak on that. Colleagues, the vote is on whether this is to be added as an emergency item. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I won't comment on the substance. I just want, since we're discussing the idea of adding this to the agenda, colleagues, I just want to say, you know, amidst all the heavy topics we're discussing, this is just for us to discuss. And if you still choose to vote it down, then that's understandable, but we're just saying, the chair is currently saying that we can't discuss the content. I understand that. So for the sake of allowing us to have a discourse about that content, it needs to be on the agenda. And so for it to not even be considered to be added to the agenda seems a bit dismissive of my colleagues' ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Valentine?
I respect all the comments of my colleagues. My point is, in order to have that discussion, I think it should be informed by legal counsel, which unfortunately, he is unprepared to do so because he got this information two hours ago, like we all did. And so I support the foundation.
That's not true.
Mr. Burrows, please don't do like-
And so I support the foundation. I support everything that Mr. Burrows mentioned. I support all efforts to ensure children in this county get everything they need. And so I'm not against that. I don't want anyone to misinterpret my vote as being against anything that is said. My vote is for information and having an informed decision that may not, may include legal counsel's view on whether we can do this, but also the precedence it sets and the impact it would have in the future. And that's my only point. I don't want anyone to misinterpret votes that we take as being against an issue. As a Board with fiduciary responsibility, we have a responsibility to go through a process. And I, as a Board member, appointed or elected, feel a need to be informed by legal counsel, who we all agreed to support when we brought him on as advisors to us. And so that's my point. I respect any Board member's views or how they vote on this issue based on their own sense of comfort about the information they received for the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, and hopefully we can move to a vote, colleagues. Ms. Williams?
I'd just like to say I absolutely concur with Mr. Curtis Valentine's sentiment. In order to be a Board member that's leading this organization, we can not make decisions based on information that is shared with us two hours ago that is going to make a budgetary impact. And so I too will be voting against adding this to the agenda until we have information that says whether or not we can do it. There is no need in us spending time on actions that cannot be done legally. So I will wait for our attorney's advice on whether or not we will proceed. And I would absolutely support bringing it back to the Board after we get that information.
Thank you. And colleagues, let's try to move to a vote. We are, Ms. Queen, and then let's hopefully call for the vote.
I just have a question, Dr. Thornton, for clarification on my motion. So if I decide to pull that motion back and make a motion that we adjust the agenda to have our legal counselor to take 48 hours, yeah, 48 hours, enough time, to come back and bring us, and we call an emergency call meeting, because I'm hearing my Board member saying they need more time. Okay, he got 48 hours to do it, and we do an emergency call meeting. You guys are Board members? I don't want to hear you ain't got time to do it. You were elected to serve one way or the other. We will do an emergency call meeting, and we'll get this taken care of. I don't care. We have to do it Saturday or Sunday. We're gonna do it.
Ms. Queen, that, I don't see any issues with that. We've already asked our counsel to do the research.
Does that go pay with you if I do that?
Just a moment, Ms. Queen. Just a moment. We've already asked our Board Counsel to do the research. And I'm seeing some agreement among the Board members, as I see the heads nodding. And so that is a motion that you're making, and is there someone? I saw Ms. Williams seconding it. So colleagues, as opposed to adjusting the agenda, what we will ask our Board Counsel to do is to complete his research within 48 hours. Immediately after that, we will call a meeting of the Board, emergency meeting, for that item only. And we will make a decision. Let's, Mr. Thomas? Mr. Roger Thomas? You're on mute, sir. Mr. Thomas, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so just to be clear, when you say 48 hours, is that on a Monday or a Sunday? What's the expectation for delivery of the memo to the Board Chair?
On Monday.
Monday. Close the business Monday?
Yes, sir.
That's permissible. That's doable. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, that is a consensus of the Board, and that's how we will proceed. Thank you for your discussion of that issue. Can we now then have a vote on the adoption of the unmodified agenda? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. Ms. King, let the record reflect that the vote to adopt the agenda is unanimous. Colleagues, if you will now, please turn your attention to the minutes of October 8th. And a motion is in order to adopt the minutes of October 8th.
So move.
Second.
The motion is seconded by Mr. Valentine and seconded by Ms. Shepherd, that the minutes of October 8th be approved without modification. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect, Ms. King, that the minutes of October 8th are adopted without modification. Colleagues, I have a brief report of the chair. I'd first like to ask for a moment of silence for, in honor of the memory of the members of our staff and the families who have left us since the last time we met. Ms. Noelle Wilson, the daughter of Ms. Amber Wilson. Ms. Wilson is the Executive Assistant and scheduler to our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Gosson. There's Alice Campbell James, the aunt of Ms. Ayesha Berkeley, Board Administrative Assistance. Corey Freeman, the son of Katimick Freeman, Secretary Office of the General Counsel. Corey was a graduate of the Charles Herbert Flowers High School. And finally, Robert Burwell III, known as Trey, a graduate of 192017, graduate of the Dr. Henry A. Wise High School. I would ask you to please keep these individuals and their families in your prayers. And I would ask the public to please check our website for information about upcoming meetings of the Board of Education and its committees. The next virtual Board of Education meeting schedule is as follows. Our Policy and Governance Committee will meet on Thursday, October 22nd at 5:00 PM. Our Academic Achievement Committee will meet on Tuesday, October 27th at 5:30 PM. The Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee will meet on Tuesday, November 10th at 6:00 PM. And our next virtual meeting of the Board of Education will be on Thursday, November 12th, starting at 7:00 PM for the public and 5:00 PM for our executive session. Zoom details regarding each of these meetings is available on the Board of Education's website. Please continue to check the website for information about our upcoming Board and committee meetings. At this point, I'm going to defer to my colleague, Ms. Queen, for a five-minute point of personal privilege regarding domestic violence month. Ms. Queen? Please unmute yourself, Ms. Queen. You're on mute.
I'm on mute. Thank you. I'm on mute. Thank you. As you all know, I have my purple on for domestic violence month. You can really see in my house, but it's dark behind me. I have purple lights in my windows. It is domestic violence, and what I wanted to do is take a moment of purpose, of personal privilege to recognize people within our county who have fought against domestic violence. Domestic violence affect our children, our kids at a lot of our schools. Sometime our kids are coming to school with heavy hearts because of what's going on in their households and what they're seeing around them. So it makes a difference that we start not only, you know, recognizing that domestic violence does play a part in our children's role, but we also start taking the personal privilege and recognizing the people who are fighting against it to keep our children safe in their households and in our community and our county. So first of all, I have a word for our State Attorney, which is State Attorney Ayesha Bray Boy. She does a not one campaign every year. That means not one person within our county, you know, when it comes to domestic violence. So it's a Prince George's County Public Schools, in recognition of Domestic Violence Month, present this to State's Attorney, Ayesha Bray Boy. For Prince George, thank you for your dedicated contribution and your support of better women and children of Prince George's County. So we want to recognize her and thank her for all the work she does for domestic violence, to keep it, keep our children safe and keep our families safe within Prince George's County. So this is the first award. The next award goes to Sheriff Hyde. Our Sheriff's Department does, every year, they do a campaign against domestic violence. They do purple light out, and that's one of the reasons why I have purple lights in my house right now. So we want to also recognize the Sheriff's Department also for the Month of Domestic Violence to say the same thing. Thank you for your dedication, contribution, and support for our women and our children in the community for domestic violence. So I want to recognize these two people for domestic violence. And last but not least, we have two more awards. For men making a difference, I mean, to do these together, my grandbabies handed me other words. We have for delicate bonds and for Councilmember Calvin Hawkins, for men making a difference in our community. So we have awards for both of them, and I want to thank them, especially in District 6, for not only, you know, standing against the domestic violence, but also during this pandemic, they have helped in our district, making sure the kids had food, making sure they had activities. They did the book day, bag drive. They supported so many things to make sure our family was taken care of. They had been out working. I know District, Delicate Bonds with the District 2015. But I just want to say thank you from our district for all you do to make sure that our kids are put first within Prince George's County Public Schools. Thank you so very much.
Great job, Ms. Queen. Great job.
Thank you, Ms. Queen, for that expression on behalf of yourself as well as the Board of Education. At this point, colleagues, let's turn to item 2.8 on our agenda, and we will now receive a report from our Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Monica Gosson.
Thank you. Good evening. We continue to work hard to improve the virtual learning experience for our students. This week, we streamlined the login process for class Zoom meetings to reduce the number of steps. And while there were a few hiccups, students' online security continues to remain our priority. And so we'll continue to support families as they use this new process to log on. I hope you took, I hope our families took part in our virtual learning survey, which closed this past Sunday. Your input is crucial as we continue to evaluate our virtual learning model to make sure it's providing the best instruction possible. To help students build literacy skills during virtual learning, we have launched Prince George's County Public School Reads. It's an innovative community tutoring initiative. We're partnering with professional tutors, community leaders, nonprofit organizations, and civic organizations to pair 1,000 adult volunteers with 1,000 students in kindergarten through second grade. Volunteers will serve as reading guides and will spend one to three hours reading virtually to students. Tutoring begins next month and will take place twice a week in the afternoons through April 2021. You can register your student through October 21st on our website. And to date, over 500 families have signed up for this opportunity. So thank you, Prince George's County Public School community, for remaining engaged. Applications for high school specialty programs and middle school creative and performing arts programs for the 2021-2022 school year are now open and available online through December 18th. Applications for high school career and technical education programs are a process, which runs from November 3rd through January 8th. If you haven't already, please visit our website to check out the many special programs available. As a reminder, students need to have up-to-date immunizations so they will be prepared when school reopens in February. In partnership with the Prince George's Health Department and the Maryland Partnership for Prevention, we are hosting free immunization clinics and high school wellness centers in October and November. Visit our immunization webpage for details, clinic schedules, and to register online. On Friday, November 6th, we will host the Annual Excellence in Education Foundation's Gala in a virtual format. Notable alumni and distinguished community members will be inducted into the Prince George's County Public Schools Hall of Fame during a video award ceremony, which will be aired on WJLA Channel 7. And an online student artwork auction will raise funds to enhance student learning opportunities and expand scholarships. You can learn more by visiting the Excellence in Education Foundation on our PGCPS website. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gosson, for your report. Colleagues, we will now move to item 3.1. I want to, first of all, on behalf of the Board, thank the public who signed up and provided us their comments, video, as well as written and electronic comments regarding issues before the Board of Education. We received several written and video testimonies, and these testimonies are available to the Board members and to the public on our Board Docs platform, and they are available to the public for review. College, we will now turn to our consent agenda. Dr. Gosson, would you please introduce items 4, 1, 2, 4, 3?
Yes, items 4.1 through 4.3 requires Board approval of proclamations commemorating Maryland Emancipation Day, American Education Week, and Native American History Month.
Thank you, Dr. Gosson. Colleagues, a motion is in order to approve items 4.1 to 4.3.
So move.
Some problem with Ms. Emmett and seconded by Ms. Queen, that items 4.1 to 4.3 be approved. Hearing no discussion of the motion, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no. Ms. King, let the record reflect that the approval is unanimous. College will now turn our attention to item 4.4 on our agenda, and I'm going to ask Ms. Williams, who chairs our Obama's Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee, to please move this matter on behalf of the committee.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thornton. I'd like to first recognize the committee participants. Ms. Queen, my wonderful Vice Chair, Mr. Burrows, Mr. Dr. Thornton, and Mr. Curtis Valentine. Thank you so much for serving on the Board with me. We have, we asked the Board members to submit five budget priorities for review and approval. We received from our 14 Board members, including our student Board member, over 61 budget priorities. We compiled the priorities into five categories. They were staff pay benefits and increase in staffing, number two, academics, number three, capital programs and facilities, number four, extracurricular programs, and number five, a reduction in class size. So I would like to make a motion that we accept these five priorities to be sent to Dr. Gosson for review and inclusion in the budget development for the FY 2022 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for that motion on behalf of the committee. No motion, no second is required because it is a committee report. Colleagues, is there any discussion of the motion before we vote on it? Hearing no discussion, the vote is on the referral of this to Dr. Gosson for review and comment. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect, Ms. King, that the vote of the Board of Education is unanimous, and I will thank Ms. Williams and members of the committee for their work. College, we will now turn our attention to the Board's consent agenda, items 5.1 to 5.3. Dr. Gosson, would you please introduce those items?
Point of order, Mr. Chair, can we move 5.3 separate?
Yes. Dr. Gosson, would you introduce item 5.1? And 5.1 and 5.2?
Items 5.1 and 5.2 requires Board approval of the continued partnership with the Foundation School and November 2020 expenditure requirements.
College, the vote is on, the vote and discussion is on, are on 5.1 and 5.2. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you. I had a question regarding how students are chosen for those 15 spots at the Foundation School that we support.
Yes, their individualized education plans are identified, makes their determination for the Foundation School, and that's after some multiple forms of testing, psychological, academic, and referral recommendations.
Now, is this school considered a contract school, and how is it authorized? I'm just curious.
It falls under Maryland State Department of Education. We've had an ongoing contract with them for years, and it helps for our, we consider it one of our non-public education sites for special education students.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Colleagues, the vote is on only items 5.1 and 5.2. Those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. Ms. King, let the record reflect that the vote on those two items, 5.1 and 5.2, is unanimous. Dr. Gosson, would you please introduce item 5.3 for discussion?
Thank you. Item 5.3 requires Board approval of the Alternative Construction Funding Package.
Is there a motion regarding item 5.3?
So move.
The motion is moved by Ms. Boozer-Strather, seconded by Ms. Williams. Discussion. Ms. Emmett?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. And colleagues, over the past couple of weeks, we've received hundreds of emails demanding transparency and accountability around this project. Folks have been asking pointed questions about financial analyses, having a full and up-to-date value for money analysis. They've also been providing suggestions like how we should be auditing our capital program projects for the last several years to see where we might be able to improve and be more efficient. And I agree with these concerns, and I agree with the- And I agree with these concerns, and I agree with these suggestions. I know that it doesn't come as a surprise to you all that, uh, I am skeptical of this project, the costs, the timeline, uh, the financing, all of that. Um, and it's no question that I've been at the forefront in educating our community members about what I know, uh, of P three based upon my readings and my research and, uh, viewings of, of our, of our meetings and of other meetings as well. Um, I'm, I'm not here to convince you one way or another. Uh, my ask is that you, uh, take all of the emails and all of the correspondences that have come our way when it comes to this deal and vote your conscience and, and only your conscience and no one else's conscience in, in making a decision here today. Um, this is a big deal, as, as all of y'all know, and, uh, we can't afford to, for it to be a failed one.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Uh, Mr. Mr. Valentine.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Ahmed, and I, and I, I honestly and wholeheartedly thank you for your leadership. Um, I have received those emails. Um, and I'm still receiving emails. Um, and it was a, a clear organization of people really who wanted to understand this process, had concerns, um, that were all, um, you know, honest and, and, and should have been, uh, uh, answered. Um, I believe that our county executive and our CEO, uh, were very thoughtful and on time with putting together, uh, conversations with the community, um, conversations with school board members to answer our questions. Uh, but also I think your point around people coming together and making a decision based on conscience is one hundred percent. And so when I think about, uh, my vote tonight, uh, and I think about rumors about people's influence over votes, particularly those who are appointed to the board, obviously appointed by the county council, um, an eleven-member elected, uh, committee, uh, uh, council in this, in the system, um, which in many cases are not all unified in the decision. At the same time, I had made my own decision, uh, based on a couple of factors. One, my children attend a school that's over seventy years old. Uh, this last year, they've had to share that school with the school down the street. Uh, that was literally deemed structurally inadequate. And those students were moved into my children's school. Uh, some of you all know, I'm like a broken record. My wife is the principal of the largest middle school in this county, one of the newest middle schools. That school is over thirty percent overcapacity, even as it's a new middle school. And so I don't have to go very far to hear about the need for how we need to move forward. I've been on this board for seven years, and for seven years, we've come up with different ideas on how to address this issue that is not only a Prince George's County issue, is a statewide issue. And so, uh, I, I vote my conscience. I vote my wallet as a Prince George's County resident, someone who believes that there is business to be had by black minority local businesses here in the county that I believe are going to make this county better. And so I'm voting my conscience, I'm voting my wallet, I'm voting my dinner table, and I'm voting my community. Um, and I appreciate everybody on this board who's advocated. I've received just as many messages from people who support this, who have a similar story as mine, who said, Curtis, please support this for all the reasons that you just said. And so again, I appreciate all the advocacy. I appreciate those who email me who support and those who don't support this. Uh, but tonight I'll be voting my conscience, my dinner table, my wallet, um, and my home and my, and my school system, one that I fight for every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Ms. Queen. Uh, colleagues, we are doing five minutes and then three minutes. Uh, Ms. Queen.
Okay, thank you so very much. Um, I just want to add my sentiment to, um, I've received a lot of the emails, and it really was a hard choice, and and I thought about, you know, my district and how old the schools are, and we've been here, and we're in, been a year, we've been here in Black Lives Matter. Well, Black Community Matters, Black Generation Wealth Matter also. And so it got so web, I've gotten so many emails, and I remember I had to be reminded by my dad, had to call my father, you guys, to get some input. And when I have to call all the way to Georgia, this was really a hard decision for me to stick by. And one of the things he said to me is, what is the cost of not doing the P three compared to the cost of not doing it? He said, you know, I'm talking about, and when you think about it, he said, when you don't do it, and you're talking about a thirteen-year generation, that's a whole time that my grandchild or someone else could have graduated. How many doctors and lawyers and, um, politicians and scientists we could have lost within that generation by not doing the P threes? Because they wasn't getting a fair education, because they didn't have schools where they had good technology yet, where they actually will be able to succeed in life. So I had to really think about that, and he's so true, because I think of the years that my kids had not, my, my sister and brothers went to Central High School. No change was done at Central High School, and it's unfortunate that we still don't have a new school. But right now, I have a chance for my community, and my community members are saying, we have a chance to get Walker Mill Middle School. Why not get Walker Mill Middle School? So we have to really think about when we talk about not voting against things, and one of the biggest things it is, it makes me wonder, and I had to think about this. If, if it makes you wonder about the agenda, the people who are really against this, because if we have a chance for generational wealth, if we have a chance to do something different, if somebody is really to, willing to invest their money, you guys, in Prince George's County and buying schools, and we have people again, then what is their agenda? And I had to think about that. Is it someone who's outside? So you got to really think about the agenda. Is their agenda really about our kids? And then I thought about so many complaints, as I've been an activist forever through, uh, you know, the PTSAs with so many kids, and I've heard so many complaints when it started with the lottery, then it went to MGM, and how money wasn't being sent from the school to the schools. But guess what? Our school's going to be built. We don't have to worry about lottery money or MGM money. We're getting someone who's going to invest it. Now I know this, this school is going to be right here, three houses over me in Capitol Heights, Maryland. So we know the schools are being built, so why are we questioning that? It's not like the county council is saying, oh, we're going to raise your taxes, and people are saying, why we keep raising taxes? You're not building us any schools. And then last, I want you guys to think about, we got houses being built all around us. We're getting so many new kids, you know, in this area, and I hear people keep saying, you're building all these houses where we have the schools. We have an opportunity to build these schools. Yes, it's going to be a lot of questions. Yes, there's a lot of unanswered answers, but we as board members, we have, we have the right, and we have the opportunity to ask these questions. We have the opportunity to stop when things are not going right. That's why we were elected to represent you, and I just want to say, my vote is going to definitely be for it, because I ran to put kids first, what changed, and then putting kids first, what changed? It will be to make sure that we get them not only the best schools, but schools with new and updated technology. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Uh, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Joshua Thomas.
Thank you, and I just want to, um, you know, really thank my colleagues who have spoken already. Uh, Ms. Queen, I think you really captured it perfectly, because as I'm thinking about this issue, I'm thinking about my experience as a teacher. And I'm thinking about the needs of the students who I taught. Uh, and you're absolutely right that when our lens and when our focus is around students and what students need and, uh, what students need to learn, uh, then our priorities look different. And so I, I just want to acknowledge that. I also want to just thank and acknowledge the work of my colleague, Ms. Ahmed. I think you, uh, have done a really excellent job of leading a lot of the discussions and really pointed questions about this deal. So I really want to make sure I echo that appreciation. In your remarks, you talked about the hundreds of emails we've received. I too have received them. I also just want to take a moment to voice, uh, that I have received a lot of emails in favor of this. And as a matter of fact, I just did a, a rough count today, just to, just to do a little tally, and I actually received more emails in favor and encouraging me to support this. Now, of course, I'm not voting based on how many emails that I receive for one cause or the other, but I just wanted to be clear that I know that there's a lot of, of activism and, and passion around this issue that is going against it. And I, I want to caution, uh, that in an echo chamber, it can feel, uh, like your idea is, is only supported by uh, you and the folks that are around you, and I just wanted to make it clear that there is, there is a lot of support that I'm, I'm getting from parents, community members, and students that are in favor of this, um, of this proposal. So I just want to make sure that's clear. I know there's been a lot of activism and advocacy and, and, and really disputing this, this deal, but there has been a lot of support. I want to make sure that the public knows that and that you hear that as we're voting on this matter, that we've heard both. It, it has not just been, um, folks who have been emailing us and telling us, uh, to not support this deal. So just want to make sure that folks in the public know that, because you cannot see what's in my inbox. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, uh, Mr. Swan.
Yep, thank you, Dr. Thornton. Um, thank you, colleagues. Um, I, I, I got to say, I got to second really a lot of the comments that are already made by Mr. Valentine, Mr. Thomas, uh, Ms. Queen. Um, I, I think you hit it right on the head. First, I want to say, um, thank you to Dr. Gosson and your team for all the hard work um, and answering all my questions and all the sessions that we have had, um, over the last several months. Um, I know it's not been easy, um, and I, I just want to publicly say thank you for really leaning forward and leading on such a, such a, um, innovative way to turn a corner for our school system. Um, I think this is more than about just our kids. This is about our teachers and, and, and providing the best place to work in this state. I think this is about our community. I think this is about investing into our future. Um, this is about our infrastructure. Um, everything starts with school, and we got to make sure that we are doing the best that we can. Um, I know there, in the past, there have been issues, which is why we need a new approach. This is why that I, I'm absolutely for, um, um, this motion for, for the ACF. Um, I think the transparency needs to be there. Um, I think we need to be very engaged. The work starts not just now, the work, I mean, the, the, the work doesn't just happen up to this vote. The work now happens after this. Um, and I just urge all my colleagues to be committed and be consistent, uh, with this process, because I think this is a great opportunity for us um, to really pivot, um, a- a- as, as mentioned in the document, um, the age of some of these schools, eighty years old. I mean, that's, that's twice my lifetime. Um, a- and then we want to say, um, we are, we are, um, about our children, and, and I just, I'm just super excited, um, super committed, and I hope that, uh, my colleagues also see this. And just to Mr. Thomas's point, I, I got to say this, um, I've had an outpour, um, from District Four, um, who a lot of these schools directly affect. Either, um, they live in District Four and they go to one of these schools, or, or one of these schools is within District Four. Um, and it's, and it's just very clear to me, um, um, what our community needs, and, and just, if you just walk the schools, you, you can see um, that, that we need something different. And so I, I just want to say thank you to all my colleagues for your attention on this. Um, the, all the forums, uh, Mrs. Ahmed, I, 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 Ms. Ahmed, I, I got, I don't know, Mrs. Ahmed, right? Um, um, all right, because, um, on, on your, your work on this, you know, I, I think, um, that's, that's what makes this important, is that we look at it from all perspectives. I mean, and you get as much information as you can. Um, but like Mr. Valentine said, I, I will be voting my, my heart. I will be voting, uh, my community, um, the schools I went to myself and, and my children go to. Um, I, I just, I just think it's important for us to, to kind of take the step forward to bring Prince George's County where we know um, it should be. Um, and I think this is a great example of, um, how we can be progressive in that nature. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Uh, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Um, first, I'd like to say, you all know that I will be voting yes on this ACF. Um, I have been in this conversation since about two thousand seventeen. Um, when I got on the board back in two thousand and fourteen, we, there was a study that was done. They said that there is billions of dollars of backlog in our construction needs. And we knew that that money was not going to come from anywhere. With the money that we get annually on our CIP, that would not help us to move the school system forward. We would still be doing the same thing with little money. It takes about ten years to go from concept to opening doors for our schools. And so I've been talking to Dr. Matlock, I'm sorry, Mr. Matlock and his group for years. I've been in meetings with county councils, county executives, staff, um, legal and finance. This matter became more than just a speed of opening new schools quicker. It became a financing deal. And so with all of the, the conversations that were had, we ended up with the ACF. There was a function of cost. And so we have had several meetings for several years talking about this issue. I am so proud to be at this point where we are going to be stepping out in front of the crowd and being looked upon as a, a, a trendsetter on building new schools quicker. In addition to this, this helping us to build new schools quicker, it also satisfies or supports another issue that's in my district, the overcrowding of Accip Academy. With, with the new school that's being built in the southern part of the county, we will be able to support or diminish that issue and take it off the table over time. So I am so happy that we're at this point to be able to try something that's innovative, to try something that will get our schools put in quicker. With any construction efforts, there are risks involved. But because all of us are watching this, and like, uh, my colleague Brian Swan said, this is not the start, this is not the end of this, this issue. This is the beginning. We will have to monitor this, ask those right questions to make sure that if we foresee a mistake happening, that we can ask the questions to try to put it back on track. So this is a big deal. It's a big deal to be building six new schools in four years. And we cannot afford to wait another thirteen or ten years to get our students into new facilities. And once we're successful with this, I believe that we will do this again and be able to put more schools, more new schools in our system to get rid of the old school. So I will be supporting this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Uh, Ms. Boozer Strummer.
Thank you so much, Dr. Thornton, and I appreciate all of my colleagues and your comments, so I, I, I won't, uh, say repeat everything, but my sentiments are so much with you, uh, colleagues, Queen, Williams, Valentine, Swan, uh, Thomas, every, you know, who spoke to the need for these schools, and, and, and I agree, I appreciate, uh, the questions asked by the community and, um, and I think as we have asked, we have moved those questions to administration. We've had so many public meetings in the last couple of weeks since the, the latest information has become available, the selection of the developer, but, but this is, you know, the story goes about decades, but, you know, as someone who was, uh, elected in District Three in two thousand eighteen, the story, uh, for me goes back to twenty seventeen, when I attended a CIP public hearing as a PTA leader of a, a nearly fifty-year-old school with a seventy, nearly, with now a seventy-year-old school down the street, uh, being told that there will be no new northern high schools. We are, we're going to have five thousand more students soon, but the funding is not working. The state isn't funding at the right levels. We have to start coming up with solutions that were all programmatic. Evening highs, you know, moving, you know, evening high schools, other ways to move the kids around. It was still not going to relieve overcrowding. And that meeting, a question was asked of, of who's going to lead this, and I was sitting in a room with county council members, set, a state senator, current board members, and, you know, we all looked at each other. I announced I would run for this seat at that moment, and that we would work on this. So I ran on this issue, was elected on this issue, and my, my constituents have been so engaged for the City of Hyattsville Educational Facilities Task Force, the parents of the, uh, the entire Route One Corridor, the Northern Gateway, Councilmember Denny Taveras' partnership in this has been invaluable. We all together voted on this many times over the, over the last two years and have been informed, had been informed in the financial models going back two years ago to a retreat. And also, you know, the Adelphi Area overcrowding plan, and through that, the Adelphi Hills Citizens Association has been very involved in this and educated, and in fact, was sitting in the room when the concept of ACF was announced, it, to great relief that there was another way out of this, instead of waiting on the state. And so as we move forward, I just want to encourage everyone to support the Built to Learn Act. Again, want to thank Dr. Goldson for her leadership, Sean Matlock, and now Jason Washington, who has put himself out there. He has been in, in public meetings, taking questions, and he will, he will take those questions and help all of us, uh, answer the public's questions as we move forward. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Boozer Strummer. Uh, very good colleagues, and, uh, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, um, I'm not sure if there's going to be a second round, but I'll put it in my request. Uh, I first, uh, want to, uh, definitely echo what many of my colleagues have said and, and thanking some of our colleagues for pushing this initiative, uh, more recently or over the past couple of years. A personal shout out to Ms. Williams for her work. I definitely was lending, uh, my ear to her expertise in this field, not just on this topic. Uh, and of course, to, uh, Ms. Ahmed, who has always, even when our days, going back to the university system of Maryland, has been pushing, uh, for, uh, transparency, uh, for all things relating to uh, students and their government. Uh, my question, um, is centered around, uh, the col-, uh, as colleagues have mentioned, the emails that we have been getting, uh, because, um, the first couple of series of them, um, have, uh, questioned, uh, some of the, uh, actions that this county has taken, this board has taken, and I just had to refresh my memory. So my questions are, are to the CEO. And I just had to refresh my memory. So my questions are, are to the CEO because I did a search of my email dating back to when I first joined this board in 2015. One of the first emails was from her around the Master Plan Support Project, under a different title. She was the Chief Operating Officer at that time. So, uh, to our CEO now, um, I just wanted to make sure I got my dates right. The Master Plan Support Project started in 2015. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I have here, is on our website, there's a flyer that says, "Learn more about the PGCPS Educational Facility Master Plan", which is, uh, known, uh, as acronym EFMP. We had three community meetings, April, May, and I think June of 2016. The Master Place Support Project fed into the Educational Facilities Master Plan, to which our county did, uh, three listening sessions on.
That, that is correct, and we do do that annually. We do that annually.
So then I have the NOT Commission, which was started by the Maryland General Assembly in 2016. And for two years, they did a report, uh, Prince George's County Public Schools and the County Council were represented on the NOT Commission. And that report came out January 2018. And then I have, more recently, Board Policy, Prince George's County Board of Education Policy, and you, colleagues, you all know this is near and dear to my heart. 0101 on educational equity on page five, item six. The Prince George's County Public School System should include measurables in terms of community performance index in all plans for new construction and renovation of existing buildings. And that's just an equity. I'm moving on now to the Prince George's County P3 Alternative Construction Financing Work Group. Uh, my question is to the CEO, when did that workgroup start local? Because I know we had one on the state level for two years. When did that one start local?
Eight, 2018.
2018, so that's been going on for two years. I, I have a, I have an article here from the Washington Post known for, uh, the uncovering in transparency. Uh, I have a, uh, article here, May 5th, 2019. With eight and a half billion dollar backlog, Prince George's County looks for public-private partnerships. And there are many people from the administration, uh, different projects throughout the state highlighting P3. It goes on to, to really highlight the work that we've been doing for the past, well, since 2015. And then I have the Build to Learn Act. The Speaker of the House and the outgoing and incoming President of the Maryland State Senate came all the way down here to Prince George's County and stood in a, in a building that was dilapidated and had to be closed, uh, under emergency to announce the Build to Learn Act of 2020. The very first sentence of the state statute now. And this is the same bill that we, as a school system, pay for buses of students and parents and educators to go down to march in favor of. It says, "For the purpose of acquiring certain public school, construction projects in Prince George's County to comply with a certain memorandum of understanding." And that the Prince George's County Government, the Prince George's County Board of Education and a private entity entering into a public-private partnership agreement. That leads us to tonight. Dr. Goldson, I'm, I'm reading the board action summary after I, I've read the entire 600 something pages for twice. I just wanted to confirm, just for geographical understanding, five of the six new schools will be built inside the Beltway. Is that correct?
That is accurate.
Dr. Goldson, Wallace, Mr. Wallace, I'll come back to you. Please, with your thought.
That is all for now.
Yeah, another board member wants to speak before I go back to Mr. Wallace. Wallace, you may continue for three minutes, and then I'll come to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for my second round. Colleagues, there's been a lot of back and forth on this issue. It, it, the, the topic is controversial, but I do not believe the premise is in providing an equitable education for students, both in terms of academics and physical structure. For decades now, the communities of District Highs, Forestville, Sudland have been asking not only for a new high school, and they're getting it, but also a new middle school. And they have the chance to get it today. I am not sure why this is, this particular topic is that controversial for those students to get a new facility. I am not sure why. And over the course of hundreds of emails and, and interactions that I've had ever since I joined this board, it always came back to how can we provide the best educational outcomes for students? Both academically and in terms of their physical structures that they go in and out of. I will not be voting my conscience tonight. I'll be voting for Christopher's conscience, for Marquesia's conscience, I'll be with conscience. I'll be voting for Jamal's conscience. These are students that I met with numerous times touring through, through my middle school, and they had to wear coats because the heat didn't work. For the parents that couldn't attend community meetings or parent meetings because the school had to be closed because it was too cold or it was too hot. Because the, the boiler system was so outdated that it outdated some of the students' parents. I'm voting for them, not voting for me. I'm not voting my conscience, I'm voting theirs. Thank you. There you go back.
Thank you, colleague. I'm Ms. Queen for three minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I just want to, um, say to my board members, my fellow board members, that we are board and we are body that work together. We all have different, unique functions. Um, Mrs. Ahmed, you do a great job with your function of the board. You're always questioning, you use that brain is always going. That's why I enjoy sitting beside you, and I appreciate you for that. And of course, Mr. Chair, the head, you do a great job. And we have people here that have eyes and ears, they're watching it. And then of course, adding you guys, your feet are always out, but we all work together. But I just want to remind you all that I am, I am the heart and the soul of this board, okay? So in saying that, with being the heart and the soul of the board, my heart is definitely, as my, um, coach and one of our board members just said, for the students, it's always about putting our kids first for the change. The kids that are sitting in these schools that are old and outdated, where some of them are cold and some of them had mold and mildew, and some of them still had asbestos. Let's be realistic. I've walked out of schools and if I could, if I would have shared some of the things that were in some of these schools, you guys would, we would just be ashamed to have our kids in these schools. In my district, we haven't had any new schools. And it, you know, I've heard about this, as Mr. Wallace said, even before I ran to be on the board, I was out in my coffee circle meeting talking about P3. I've been talking about it for a while to my coalition meeting. So I know PC was coming. Too many generations in my district have been in old and outdated schools. I had 16 kids that graduated from Central High School through all the problems, through all the leaks, through all the, uh, the heating issues. I refuse to have my grandchildren do the same thing. Generations that have been lost, that could achieve the whole lot more, who didn't have a fair chance in my, in my district, they didn't have the fair chance of a state of art technology. It has been so wrong. We can no longer accept that. And so that's, as I said, I will not be voting for, but I just want to close with this. Every vote counts tonight. This vote gives us an opportunity of control, our destiny for Prince George's County Public Schools, to do the right thing for our kids. And they say that one vote, one vote can rock the boat. Don't let that be your boat and rock in the boat. This is for our kids and putting our kids first. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Williams, uh, for three minutes, and then we can try to move.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Um, I'd just like to share, um, the process that this took. Um, in order for us to make this legacy change that we're making to the school system, it took the idea, collaboration, and people be- becoming a part of this. We have, like I mentioned before, it's not just the school system that has made this, this decision. It is also in collaboration with the county council and in collaboration with the county executive. So this is not something that we, we have ever done before, so this is something different. We have to opt for it at this point in time. We continue to do what we have been doing in the past, or we decide to move forward in a new direction to support bringing new schools to our students as quickly as possible. And I agree with, um, Ms. Queen, when she think, when she always says, "It's about putting our students first", and this gives us that opportunity to put our students first. So let's vote in the, what I believe is, is for our children, which is in support of the ACF. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Um, Ms. Ahmed for three minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Um, I, I really want to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Wallace's point or, uh, of, uh, concern or confusion, um, around like, why is this controversial? And I want to provide my perspective of why I've, why I'm feeling this type of way about, uh, this deal. I think it's controversial because it's expensive. This is 1.24 billion dollars to build six schools. And I, all I can think is if we're going this route, it's because something has not been working well. And why don't we, why are we putting a Band-Aid over the leak when we should be fixing the whole pipe? Um, and so I think the one suggestion that was brought up by members of the community that he had emailed me with concerns was around, um, that audit of our capital project so that moving forward, we're able to make sure that our projects are on time and on budget for all of our schools, because this is just six schools. And we have a responsibility for our entire district. And so I hope that consideration is taken into place. I also think this is controversial because of the ENA period, which, uh, was only recently, uh, introduced to us, um, within the last several months, uh, of after this board votes. Um, there's going to be three months of discussing and negotiating the contract that we won't be privy to and that we don't know exactly what's going to be negotiated. And that's, that's kind of concerning for me. I mean, it's just, also, you all know me. You all know, um, how I am with my level of detail and how I care about the details. And I think with a deal this big and understanding the risks, this is, um, this is what's important to me. And I think that's where some controversy lies as well. And I think, uh, the last point of controversy that I'll mention is, uh, the timing of this vote, um, coming just a couple of weeks before our, our election, uh, where we may be getting new colleagues. And, um, it reminds me of kind of what's going on with the Supreme Court, um, and the conversations that are going on with the nominations there. You may disagree with me, but I, I do believe that is something that has come forward and something that folks have told me that this is a concern for them. Um, and so tho- those are the pieces of controversy that I wanted to give from my perspective. Um, and I really do hope on the Capitol audit piece that we do take that, uh, into deep consideration because that's the way that we can make sure that we can do best by all of our students and not just a small pocket of them.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Uh, colleagues, uh, as I'll limit myself also, as I'm doing for all board members. Um, you know, I will be supporting, uh, the proposed ACF MOU. Um, and 42 years ago. See, I, I, as you all know, I operate from the assumption that all children should be treated equally, notwithstanding their class, their race, uh, who their parents are, where they can afford to live. Now, 42 years ago, uh, my baby was attending the Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. At that time, um, it was significantly diverse, mostly white, uh, and a fairly modern school. If I go to that same school now, when the community has changed substantially demographically, it is an old school. Now, that's a phenomenon that you need to chew on because this is really what's at stake here. We have allowed over the past, uh, more than almost 42 years, 50 years, uh, uh, for the non-response to the school and facilities needs of our babies to deteriorate as a function of who those babies are. Now, we can come up with all kinds of excuses, but that is what it is. We can talk about transparency, accountability, government, whatever. At the end of the day, the students changed and our willingness to support schools for them changed, period. Now, this Board of Education, which is why I'm so pleased, will not let that happen. Uh, we will fight and advocate and we will demand and we will march and we will petition and we will document. But we will not let Latino and Black and lower-income significantly in a Beltway children go without adequate schools. No excuses. Now, I've gotten all kinds of emails and I've responded to just about all of them. But no eloquently written statement, no article from a national newspaper will change what I just described to you. See, Prince George's County started to, uh, Ms. King, keep me in my five minutes. Prince George's County started to stop building schools for children when the, when the children changed. Be very clear about that. Now, I don't know if a lot of people who are writing emails to me have a clue about what I'm talking about. But if you don't, you're being irresponsible in your advocacy. And you're being irresponsible to the children, to little Black, low-income, Latino children. Now, that, that means, you know, I'm very receptive to the advocacy. I'm one of the greatest advocates. I was in Annapolis. I was sweating and marching and for the Bill to Learn. So I don't take a backseat to anybody about advocacy and revolution and all of that. But I will never let any kind of excuses have our babies just because they are Black and low, low-income and Latino sitting in old schools. So if you don't know the history, I'm telling you, right? When we stopped building schools in 1978 because the children became Black, and we disengaged from those babies, and we didn't build any more schools until the federal court made us do it. You didn't get a quart of rice and you didn't get a ghost and you didn't get a wise and you didn't get a flowers until a federal court, uh, an old white man in a green belt made us do it. Now, we're not going to sit around and let that happen. We are board of education. We are county executive. We are council. We are citizens and delegates, and we are going to do right by our babies. Now, it's going to be complex, right? No, just, we, we, once we pass this tonight, I hope board members will, it doesn't mean that we're not, our budget of, uh, or, or this is a, this is a different board. My colleague, Ms. Ahmed, we're going to be on the case. We're going to be monitoring. We're going to require accountability from Dr. Goldson for, for those of who are saying that this, no, this is a different board. Okay, in terms of accountability. Uh, but the one thing we will not let happen is Mr. Thomas has told me my five minutes are up. Uh, one thing we will not let happen is any more excuses from anybody. That's the why lower-income, 65% Latino and Black children cannot have high-quality schools just like anybody else. Enough of the excuses, right? Because at the end of the day, notwithstanding the excuses, our babies end up in what? If they're elementary kids in schools that are 63 years old, it just angers me. And if they're middle and high school kids, they end up in schools that are 50 years old. Now, no one would let their babies be in that situation. So I'm going to be supporting it. My five minutes are up and I'm calling time on me as I recognize Mr. Joshua Thomas, and hopefully we can vote. Mr. Thomas for three minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to respond, um, you know, to one of the remarks made by Ms. Ahmed that I think is a great point and holds a lot of weight for me i- is the, um, the similarities between this issue and the current one that's, that's happening on our national stage with the Supreme Court nomination. And, uh, you know, I'll just acknowledge, there, there is, uh, obviously a very great chance that we may have uh, uh, more than one new face that would be voting on this issue if it were to come, uh, just, just in, in a month or a little bit more than a month's time. So I want to acknowledge that, and this was actually a thought that was on my mind as I was considering how to move forward with the vote here. I reached out to administration, uh, about this possibility and, and, and the response that I got, I will, I'll try to kind of paraphrase, but I was told, uh, that, uh, because of, uh, this proposal being based on our, on our specific timing, that it would be considered a breach by us if we were to delay this. Uh, we wouldn't be able to hold them to the same pricing and commitments. They would argue that we've changed the procurement. Uh, and, uh, finally, when this, this point holds a lot of weight for me as well, that, uh, they'd be incredibly leery of believing that this would actually be resolved after a month's delay. Uh, and then there would be nothing binding us to continuing to, from continuing us to delay. Uh, and they could ultimately cancel, and it could open us up to a potential bid protest by an unsuccessful bidder. Uh, so I definitely consider this. Uh, I think that, uh, again, that point makes a lot of sense. And, uh, that, that, uh, voters should be given the opportunity to weigh in on this with the way that they vote in this, this upcoming election. That being stated, at this moment, that is just too great of a risk. Uh, the, the, the issues that I just described, and when I ran for this position, I ran with the priority of putting student learning first. Uh, and as a part of that, uh, uh, prioritizing, uh, building new schools for our students to learn in and ultimately reducing overcrowding. Uh, and so, uh, for that reason, uh, I, I, I think that I, that we should be moving forward with this. But I just want to, you know, give credence to the point that you made, that it is something that I thought of, uh, and, and, and weighed in as I was making my decision as well.
Thank you, colleagues. We can now, uh, hopefully move to- Thank you, colleagues. We can now hopefully move to a, a vote and I'm going to ask Ms. Berkeley to please call the roll. Oh, Mr. Burrows, I'm sorry. Hold it, hold it. Mr. Burrows.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, I have a couple of things to say and I'll try to be as succinct as possible. I think it's important not to dismiss what we've heard from the public as it's, as it relates to our communication around this issue. Mr. Wallace laid out a host of things that the board did, and we did those things. And yet, there were so many individuals that don't have, that, that have no reason to make anything up that did not know the, 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 the basics of what the board and the system have been doing as it relates to P three. And so we can't dismiss that. We need to look at that, accept responsibility and commit to doing better. And I think dismissing that would be a mistake. I sat on a call with some of my folks in Fort Washington. And one of the, one of my neighbors in Fort Washington who lives connected to where the southern area school is going to be built said, you know, I've lived here for forty-something years. I had no clue that this was happening. But members of the P T S A at Potomac Landing, they knew. And so clearly there was some outreach that was done, but it was not adequate and not sufficient. And I think moving forward, you know, we need to ensure that we do a better job there. I, I also think to Ms. Ahmed's point, doing these six schools is not going to fix our larger, broader issue. And been able to review a lot of the documents that have been sent to me over the last few, few days, few weeks, I, I am fully persuaded in an agreement that we need to do a comprehensive audit and review of our C I P program. That will allow us to do more renovations for our people, for our, for our students and ensure that our tax dollars are, are used in the best way possible. So Ms. Ahmed, I'm part, you know, you have my, I'm revering pledge to work with you on drafting that up as we draft so many things up all the time. But tha- that's one that I'm going to work on for sure. When, when Dr. Thornton and I was briefed on this, I would say maybe last month or a couple of weeks ago, I gave my word that I would vote for this proposal if there was a labor component in place. And it drives me crazy, as the superintendent can tell you, when someone gives me their word and they don't do what they say they're going to do. And so I'm going to do what I said I'm going to do. And the reason why I really wanted a labor component was because of what this board did last year. We approved a pilot and in that pilot, I have some of the results. Oh, I thought I had it. I have so many, so many things up, guys. We hired over nearly sixty percent of those individuals that were hired were county residents. All of them were given health care, health insurance, retirement, workplace protections, protections against wage theft. Most of them were women, actually. And that was just so important to me that we had a labor component. And so I said it, you know, to the superintendent and to the chair. If you guys are able to work this out, I'm going to give you my vote and I'm a person of my word. Last night, the agreement happened. And, and so tha- that's something that I, you know, something that I wanted to inform the public about. And then the last thing that I'll say on this is that there's a lot of passion about these six schools. And I, I heard the, the, the historical perspective that Dr. Thornton laid out, which I appreciate. But colleagues, it, it is, it is on my heart to say that we like that passion and the way that we are approaching this in what seems to be a unified way needs to also apply to High Point High School. You know, we sent over a request to start the process to rebuild High Point High School. Almost three thousand mostly immigrant children. And we just asked for eight million dollars to start the planning process to rebuild it. And the county government sent back zero dollars and zero cents. And are we going to deem that acceptable and appropriate? I don't think we should.
Mr. Burrows, because you're our final speaker, I'm going to give you three more minutes. Please proceed.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. And so the, the, the same passion that we have around these students in, in a Beltway, we also need to have with our immigrant students in the northern part of the county. And we should not accept that. And I know we did the right thing as a board and sent it over and we can only get what they give us. And I, I know that. But I would like us to stay uniform around that. As I hear Dr. Thornton's historical perspective, you know, it just, High Point High School came, came into mind. So I'll conclude my comments there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bur- Mr. Burrows. And you will, you'll remember that in my comments, I specifically referenced Latino students, the students that you're talking about. And I did that intentionally. Colleagues, I'm now going to ask Ms. Berkeley to please call the roll on this matter. Ms. Berkeley, call the roll.
Mrs. Ahmed?
No.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Did you say abstain, Mr. Murray?
Abstain, yep.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Queen?
Ms. Queen?
Aye, yes. I'm sorry, yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Vote aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Thornton?
Yes.
Eleven ayes, one nay, one abstain, and one.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues, for your vote and your debate regarding this issue. I'm now, I'm now going to yield the floor to Dr. Goson for a comment. Dr. Goson.
Thank you so much. And I'm sure you're going to get, limit me to five minutes as well. So I'll try to be really quick. I, there are lots of folks I want to thank, and I'm going to get to the most important people last. I first want to thank our county executive for honest and truly coming in and supporting um, innovative way to make sure that we supported students. This is just one of many ways and we've spent many hours in Annapolis having conversations with our elected officials over the past two years around this public-private partnership. And so I thank you for her dedicated time because she does have more than just education to focus on. So I am completely grateful for that. So the county council to the board chair, the previous board chair, the current board chair Todd Turner and the previous Danielle Galeres who started this conversation. And to all the county council members who set the table for today, I thank them for their hard work and heavy lift and remaining engaged even through the transition of members on that team, just like we have. They continue to remain engaged throughout this process and supporting our students. To C I P, to Sean Matlock and our newest addition, Jason Washington. Thank you all for all of your hard work and calls in the evening, middle of the night, weekends, answering questions. We have been diligent about responding to every email that we have received over the past couple of days, the, my mantra of responding within forty-eight hours. I tried to do it in less than that because we have nothing to hide. I want to be able to respond to questions and concerns so people remain informed. The executive leadership team members, especially Christian Rhodes and Barry Stanton, who have been tremendous and have been helpful to board members. When you couldn't get to me, you could get to them and they were quickly able to respond. So I thank them. To each of you, I thank you. When I first came into this role and accepted this role, we all agreed that we will focus on children. And when we deviated from children and dealt with adult gangs, then we would have a candid conversation with each other in closed session to make sure we got back on track. And I am grateful that we continue to keep that in the forefront of our decision-making because without children, none of us have a reason to have a job or to exist as school board members. And so I just thank you all for continuing to keep that in the forefront. And for the most important, and those are the children. I thank the Rollins of the world who got on the telephone town hall, who honest and truly I felt like we could have ended that phone meeting right then after he spoke. To Ingeri, who's a student at Kimmore Middle School who sent me an email who asked, could they have a student lounge? Just like the teachers have a lounge. To the Marcus's of the world, to the Monica's of the world. And that's in the Lindells. Those are my children and myself who all attended Prince George's County Public Schools who have still experienced excellence because we have great teachers, but did it in schools that are far from being state-of-the-art. And so I thank you all for the decision and vote today that will make a difference in the lives of our students who one day will sit in your seat and in mine. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goson. And I so, also want to thank you obviously for your leadership as the CEO of this initiative. We appreciate it. Colleagues, we will now please turn your attention to item seven point zero. I'm going to ask Ms. Boozer Strutter to please introduce items seven, one first, and then we'll talk about item seven two with Mr. Wallace being allowed to make a comment. Ms. Boozer Strutter, actually introduce both of them and then I'll defer to Mr. Wallace for a comment regarding meal shaming. Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Thank you so much, Dr. Thornton. So this is our board vote on Board Policy five, one, one, five, Student Appeals of Disciplinary Action. And the, the Governance Policy Committee has moved this to the full board for final vote. And the second policy is Board Policy five, two, one, zero, Prohibition of Systemic Meal Shaming Practices that, once again, after the public comment period, the policy and Governance Committee has recommended approval by the full board this evening.
Thank you, colleagues. Because it is a report coming from one of our committees, it does not require a second. I'm going to ask you to please vote first on seven, one. Those in favor of approving seven, one, Board Policy five, one, one, five, Student Appeals of Disciplinary Action, please say aye.
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 Ms. King, let the record reflect that the board approves item seven, one unanimously. Colleagues, the next vote is on seven, two. Before I call for a vote on that, I'm now going to defer to Mr. Wallace for comments. Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, colleagues. Colleagues, this has been a, a, a long time coming on this particular initiative. And I'll say this very personally. My tenure on the Board of Education is winding down and over the last six school years that I've been on this board, there have been a lot of things that I have brought up for discussion. All of them have been voted unanimously, but they have all been thoroughly vetted, just like this one. And on all of those measures, including this one, it always started with a straw that broke the camel's back on the issue. And for this particular initiative, I was sitting in the principal's office at Benjamin Falloy having a meeting with the new principal and our meeting stopped at, stopped abruptly. A third grader had run in and asked the principal for an extra eighty cents because that is the gap that she needed to have a meal that in the cafeteria for lunch. And the principal excused herself from her new board member and dug into her purse and got three quarters in a nickel, just so a child could close the gap to eat. And that broke my back. It broke my heart and it broke my back. And I said, I have to do something. And so I think a month later, I drafted up this eight-page policy, sent this to the CEO and I said, I want to do something like Senator Bernie Sanders and have a universal meals program for every single student in the school district. She told me the cost and I said, I don't care. And then we got down to the board and I said, okay, maybe we do need to care a little bit about the cost. But this policy does three things in statute. It prohibits the active meal shaming where we take away a hot, fresh meal to any student. And we take that conversation of meal debt away from staff member to student, to staff member to parent or guardian. And that is actually a requirement by state law now, which Annapolis has advocated for that. It's number two, it empowers the CEO with the ability to develop a universal meals program for all elementary students so that the youngest of our students do not have to worry about their school balance account or any more debt that they have already incurred. And three, and I think very importantly, it codifies a specific funding account through the Excellence in Education Foundation where a stakeholder can give on purpose monies to address food insecurity in our school system. And at our next board meeting, it will be my last board meeting. And my commitment to you all, my commitment to my county is that going forward, I will be donating a portion of my, my funds, my personal funds to this specific fund through our charitable foundation for this. I ask for your vote, as you all have done before, on this very important issue and addressing food insecurity as it has become a very major topic for me personally and professionally and my academic member of governance. And I thank you so much for allowing me to advocate for this very important issue tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace, for your advocacy and leadership on this, this matter. Colleagues, the vote is on item five, second two, Board Policy five, two, one, nine. Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Wallace, for those remarks. I will be quick and I just wanted to say a very hearty congratulations to you, Mr. Wallace. I have been on this board for now just getting to, close to two years. And this has been, it felt like it has been on our agendas for almost the entire two years. You have been extremely persistent with this. I have not seen any single one of us take up one cause as passionately and as, and as aggressively as you have taken up this. And so as you are on your way out, I, I, I can't think of any better and greater way for you to, to lead your mark on our school system. So I just wanted to say as a friend and as a colleague, congratulations to you and I'm happy to support this this evening.
Thank you, sir. Those in favor of approving item seven, two, Board Policy five, two, one.
Chair, I think Ms. Queen has her hand raised.
Oh, I didn't see that. Ms. Queen?
We're going to have to get you a bigger screen, Dr. Thornton. Okay. Real quick, I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege working with you as the Chair of the Budget Committee, Mr. Wallace. It's have definitely been my privilege with working with this because it's so important with me with feeding kids and putting kids first. I heard so many complaints. I saw, I saw what you said when I went to the schools. And even now, we don't even realize it, even though we doing the free meals for schools, I'm hearing people say, well, some kids don't want to go to get the free meals or even in some of the houses that we have buses out there because they too ashamed that people want to say, oh, you got to go get free food. So it is an issue. So we wonder why people aren't going to get some of these same thing with tennis shoes and certain things they wear because they are ashamed and they don't want to hear when people have to tease them. As we talked about it earlier, Dr. Goson, with it being bully prevention and you having a beautiful orange on. People don't like to be bullied in any form and not even to be teased about, you know, getting a meal. So I do again, I thank you. Thank you for all your hard work you've done over these last couple of years on the Budget Committee. It was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. College, the vote is now on seven, two, Board Policy five, two, one, nine. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Those in favor. Ms. Queen, Ms. King, let the record reflect that the board's vote on five, two, one, nine is unanimous. And we'll have other opportunities to celebrate our board colleague.
Mr. Chairman, that was five, two, one, zero, just.
Well, Ms. Queen, what is it, five, two, one, nine or five, two, one, zero?
I believe it is five, two, one.
One, zero.
Zero. Yes.
Nine, so we'll make sure that that's five, two, one, nine. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Shepherd, we'll now move to item seven, three, two, seven, nine. Did you ask for something on that, Ms. Ahmed, before I start this discussion?
No.
You did not? Okay. Ms. Shepherd, would you please introduce for the board, item seven, three through seven, nine, on behalf of the Academic Achievement Committee?
Good evening and thank you, Dr. Thurin. Tonight, I want to address two items. First, inform you about the academic. First, inform you about Academic Achievement Committee. Second, present our committee report regarding the extension for the charter schools. Um, Policy Eighty-One Hundred states that we have to give a report regarding our committee's charge and members. Policy, uh, Eight One Hundred also charged our committee members overseeing, on behalf of the School Board of Education, the development and implementations of academic programs, issues involved in closing gaps, improving outcomes in low-performing schools among under-deserved population, enhancing outcomes for high-performing schools and students, and addressing issues related to the educational equity. Upon adopting the academic, um, academic extracurricular and parents and community engagement policy by the Board of Education, the committee should monitor the implementation of the policies. I am joining this work with the Committee Vice Chair Paul Montero, uh, Mr. Kate Wallace, uh, Mr. Swan, and Ms. Nina Jackson. Please check our, uh, September twenty-nine meeting on Board Docs to review our extensive committee work plan. Uh, second, I am pleased to present, uh, the committee recommendation. Uh, before the board, on the, on, on second reader, our seven requests to extend charter schools agreement of, for the one year due to the impacts of COVID-nineteen. On the first reader, the Academic Achievement Committee was asked to review of the one-year charter school extensions agreement and make a recommendation, uh, to the board. The committee met virtually on September twenty-nine and October twelfth to discuss this matter. During this meeting, the committee discussed various datas regarding the charter schools' performance data, uh, various concerns about the data, the application renewal process, and the implement, uh, the impacts of COVID-nineteen on the renewal process. The committee reported unanimously to recommend to the full board the following, the following. Uh, the one-year charter school extension agreement to be approved due to the impacts of COVID-nineteen, given the concerns expressed by the committee that it is continued to monitor the progress of the charter schools and that the renewal process involve a thorough review of the charter school performance. I move to rec, uh, I move the recommendations on behalf of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Madam Chair, uh, and for the work of the committee. Uh, is there, there, there's no need for a se- second, so the motion is on the floor, and I'll recognize Ms. Queen.
Yes. Can y'all hear me? Okay. I, okay, I have some concerns, um, with the, um, extending the renewal of some of these charters, especially CMIT. I'm gonna put it on the front. Um, I think a little bit more research needs to be done on it. I also think we need to actually talk to some of the students. I mean, I've had so many issues before COVID where the kids were having so many concerns with some of the charter schools, and especially with the CMIT. I just think that we need to look at our charter schools a little different, and we need to survey our children also and get some of the opinions to make some improvements, um, on some of these charter schools. And then last but not least, I see where only, um, College Park Academy has thirty-five percent geographic lottery preference. I have a question for, um, staff. Um, when it comes to charter schools, um, besides the thirty-five percent, how is it looked at to see, and I'm gonna be honest with it, color, how many black kids are, um, at C P P A? You know, let's not just say thirty-five percent geographic, um, lottery preference, but how many of them are actually either African-American or Spanish, or, you know, or some other language? I think we need to be very careful when we just do a geographic preference. We need to make sure that we have an even number of our kids all over the county, black and white, at these schools. Thank you.
Uh, colleagues, what we are voting on, and, uh, I'm glad to hear Ms. Shepherd say that the committee, uh, will do exactly what Ms. Queen is talking about. And, um, what we're voting on tonight is simply, uh, almost an obligatory one-year extension in light of COVID-nineteen. We're not dealing with the substance of performance of, of the schools. I don't wanna try to cut off conversation, but that is what the committee is going to do. And I thank you, Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Montero, uh, for committing yourself to do that. The board is very interested in the performance of the schools. Uh, but we're just voting, uh, uh, almost procedurally, uh, to extend for one year. Uh, Ms. Shepherd.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Queen. Exactly what you said, that's the reason why we had this meeting twice. And not only that, we made it clear that approving the COVID-nineteen was because of COVID-nineteen. We went and dived in into the data, we reviewed the demographics, we reviewed the, uh, low-income students. How is the process? We went really into detail. Um, and, uh, I, I assure you that, um, we are, we were asking for answers, and we exactly, as about what you just mentioned, it's, that's what we did. Um, but this is just to do the extension because of, of one year, because of the situations that are happening with COVID-nineteen.
Thank you. Colleagues, the vote is on the one-year. Uh, Ms. Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Um, uh, I echo the, the sentiments of Ms. Queen. Uh, Ms. Shepherd, I wanna thank you and your committee for doing that work. Um, I'd expressed some of the same concerns about the charter school renewals at the last board meeting where we discussed this. And I, I think my, uh, biggest thought process on this is I don't want students to continue on, um, learning in an environment for another year, um, that, uh, may not, they may not be receiving the, uh, standard of education, even putting into account COVID-nineteen, um, that, uh, maybe they should be getting. I, I'm just, I'm really concerned. Um, I know this is not about the, 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 the performance. Uh, Dr. Thornton, I appreciate the comment that you made, but I, I've seen the data, uh, when it comes to some of these schools, and it's very concerning to me to extend it for another year. I feel like this is the time that, that these schools should be able to prove that, hey, yo, we like, we did, we tried as much as we could, and this is how we tried. And so in that sense, that's why I think that if we maintain the timeline, then we'll be able to see how they have been able to adapt and accommodate, um, for COVID and make sure that students are learning. So I don't need, I don't think an extension is needed to still show improvement and progress in learning. And that's why I, I won't be voting in support of this. Um, but I do appreciate the work of the committee in taking this seriously and doing all of the, the due diligence needed to, to address this.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Did I see Mr. Burrows' hand? Mr. Burrows?
Yeah, so I also wanna, uh, thank the committee. Thank you, uh, Sandra and Paul, uh, for, uh, really examining this issue to the degree in which it deserves. Um, you know, I, I have grave concerns about Imagine Morning Sun and Imagine Lincoln. And I, and I wanna put those concerns kinda on the record so that when it is time for renewal, you know, it, it's no surprise. But when I reviewed the, the data from twenty-fifteen up until now, our students deserve so much more, especially when we're paying an outside group to run the school. And I have the numbers in front of me. In twenty-fifteen, I see, uh, in fourth grade and fifth grade, uh, you know, four percent proficiency in math, seventh grade, two percent, uh, twenty sixteen, eight percent, seven percent, twenty seventeen, four percent, you know, in certain grades. And then that, that one year, they had zero percent of students proficient in math. And this, you know, we're paying you to run a school, you, you need to, uh, you should be excelling. I mean, you should be exceeding what our students would receive normally. And I, I have looked at the data, and I am pleased that some progress has been made. So I don't wanna discount that. I think they are trending in a much better direction than they were not so long ago. But I think this board needs to really, m- maybe doing a retreat, talk about what our philosophy is around charter schools. Uh, is it, you know, do we all believe that if we're gonna have them, that they should be performing at or above our, our average? I mean, is that, is that a, a fair thing to think? You know, h- how are we gonna grapple with these? Is, is it gonna be that they need to offer something unique that we cannot provide? I thought that's what it was, but in, in some cases, it's not. So I'm very concerned about those two imagines. Last time they were up for renewal, the question was, is this an academic success? The answer was no, uh, by the objective, uh, folks in the administration who, who evaluated it. And I, I don't ever want to vote for something that I know is not academic success. And so, you know, I voted against it last time, uh, and I never wanna vote for anything that's not academic success. So, um, you know, uh, you know, I wanna support that committee in any way that I can around, around this conversation to ensure that we're gonna contract out with, with these groups that our students are getting, you know, what we expect for them to receive.
Thank you, uh, colleague. Uh, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Burrows, uh, mentioned, and he mentioned that in the committee as well, and I wholeheartedly agree with him um, that we are paying someone to do, uh, worse, if not the same, than what we can do on our own. I was on the board, and like, with the conversation of the three-year, uh, renewal, uh, for the Imagine schools, and the same conversation was had. And I, I promise you, all that I am, if we were not in the midst of an international pandemic, my vote would be different now than it was then. I'm very disappointed. As I mentioned in the, on the previous agenda item, I've been doing a lot of reflecting on my tenure on this board. I think it was maybe my second or third meeting, and folks on the committee, you're gonna hear the story again. It was my second or third meeting, and the previous CEO, uh, sat me down, and we, we discussed all the things that were going on in the district, uh, doing a little bit of onboarding. And the topic of school closures came up. And of course, as folks know, our, our hands are tied as a board a little bit. But the choice of the administration then was to close two schools and districts. And tonight, on my way out, is it, i- in essence, is another opportunity to close two schools in District Seven. Only this time, it's in the midst of an international pandemic. And I couldn't lay my head down tonight, uh, knowing that I did that during the pandemic. But as I said, if we were not in these unfortunate times, uh, my vote would be different. Um, and it would be to, um, relieve our students of, uh, looks to be a, an unfortunate trend. Um, there's, uh, inconsistencies in administrative leadership. Uh, I asked the question about wraparound supports, um, for, for their students, and, and there were answers, uh, but I don't think they're significant enough. Um, so I hope in this year that we may be giving them tonight that their, uh, in, their increase in wraparound supports for our students, uh, are developed. And to Mr. Burrows' point of a, a retreat around public charter schools, I won't be there. Uh, but I hope that, uh, when this board does talk about what our philosophy is around public charter schools, it includes the requirement of community schools, restorative justice practices, after-school extracurricular activities, and tutoring services. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Mr. Valentine, and hopefully them both. Mr. Valentine.
Just a, just a point of clarification, um, and it sort of gets to Mr. Burrows' point. Uh, Ms. Shepherd, will leadership from these particular organizations, whether it be CMIT Foundation or Imagine Foundation, or, or the, uh, the College Park Academy, be able to address the committee or where you all asked them to come in to discuss the results, uh, that Mr. Burrows has brought up? I just wanna know what level of engagement and conversation you would have with these, uh, school leaders about the results? And to Mr. Burrows' point, the expectation the board has for them as providers of education to our students?
Mr. Valentine, if I can speak, I think that would be at the level of Dr. Gosson and the leadership of the board. I think that's an excellent idea. Dr. Gosson, let us talk about that immediately. Mr. Burrows.
Well, that could, that could throw a question to you, Dr. Thorid. Would that take place in, um, a committee meeting? Would it take place, to Mr. Burrows' point, at a retreat? I was curious what, what the forum would be for.
Let's not try to decide, you know, that, this discussion, it's a point that you raised, Dr. Gosson, you hear the concern. Mr. Burrows, you hear it. Let's talk and we'll feed back to the board. Let's, let's not try to decide. Okay. Any other questions, uh, Ms. Queen, and then we can probably vote.
I just have one question to staff, um, Dr. Gosson. Um, if, if, if for some reason it was voted down not to renew the charter, what will happen to the kids at this charter school? I just wanna know.
So if, um, the vote did not pass, what would happen is, um, we'd go back to the original plan of when they would go through the process for renewal, with this requested was just a one-year extension. So we would not, and then, um, we would present to you a chart showing where everyone falls in terms of their renewal, which you can really see from the Board Action Summit of when. And then we start the process of renewing, uh, of evaluating with an external vendor the charter that's up for renewal the closest. So we just have to move really quick to move so that we could get it evaluated and present it back to the board in time for those parents to make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Um, colleagues, the vote is on. The motion from Ms. Shepherd and the committee for a one-year extension would be appropriate to continue the investigation, accountability, um, activity on the part of the committee. Um, that is the motion, taking note of Mr. Valentine's request of me and Mr. Burrows and Dr. Gosson regarding meeting with Ms. Shepherd. Um, those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they no.
No.
Okay, I see two, three, three members, Ms. Ahmed, Ms. Queen, and Mr. Burrows voting, uh, no, no. Uh, Ms. King, that is the record of the board. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd, and Mr. Montero, and the committee members for that. Um, colleagues, there are no follow-up items from our October eighth board meeting. Um, I would like to now receive a motion to approve actions that the board took in executive session for the public. We dealt, so we received a report from our CEO regarding administration of our school system. We discussed personnel matters regarding the appointment of an individual. Uh, we received legal advice from our Board of Attorney, Mr. Thomas, and we discussed the, the internal audit investigative proceedings from Ms. Winston. Uh, a motion is in order.
So move.
Okay.
Probably move the second by Mr. Valentine and Mr. Swan, that we approve action taken in executive session. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 No, Ms. King, let the record reflect that the motion is approved unanimously by the board. College, now your motion is in order to adjourn the meeting of the board.
Oh.
Okay.
Probably move the second by Ms. Queen and Mr. Swan, that the board adjourned. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 So, let the record reflect, Ms. King, that is unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. Mask on from a distance, take care of yourselves. Thank you all.
Everybody go vote.
Aye.
Un.